All right, it's six fifteen and I'll call the October twenty fourth Cedar Springs Public School Board meeting to order. And if everyone would join me for Edible Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic.
That's studio start that we had. We have a roll call, please Secretary Slager.
Yes, Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager, here. Vice President Shoffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you. And we have established a forum for tonight's meeting. And we're moving on to the adoption of the agenda and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved before.
Any discussion? Having none, Mr. Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. Motion carries. We come upon this gratitude. So I would open the table to gratitudes from the board and the administration. I'm going to start with thank you to everybody. Greatful that you're here. It's been a long P V day. So your brains are full. And started early. So thank you for joining us today. Grateful that you're here.
I just was very grateful for the smooth parent teacher conference process. I experienced it at Cedar View last week and just all, all the way around was, was just a great process. And I also just have to throw in, I'm also thankful that our, our state football team made it to the playoffs.
You can go Red Hawks. Yeah, everyone sitting in front of TV is Scott last night.
I am thankful to the district to have been able to send me to the M A S B conference this past weekend. It was really nice to connect with other school boards across the state and I met some wonderful people and heard some great ideas and I look forward to gathering my thoughts better and sharing some of those, but not today.
Thank you.
I can go next. Just gratitude towards like the community and then also the support for our students and that I hear all the time from other school districts that even when we are visiting team, we fill the stands. And so it's just, I mean, that just shows how much support we have for our athletes and our students, even in band and all different academics. Then also too, just I'm going to speak a little bit in Mrs. Tanis' class tomorrow. So I really appreciate being included in, in their classrooms. So.
I'd like to share a gratitude from today, the monumental efforts of administrators and presenters that we had to move four hundred people through professional learning for three hours this morning and then for several hours this afternoon in P L C time. It takes an army from technology to facilities to our maintenance folks, to our custodial service, to all of the people who served from District Office as posts and posters in the different locations. It was a tremendous day.
And what Jen forgot to tell you is that on Friday at around eleven, two of our presenters who were scheduled to be in this space filled with eager learners canceled. And so Jen and Stacy rolled up their sleeves and created an amazing experience for those individuals themselves. Not only did they plan it, they really planned it and then they presented at the event. So it really was outstanding.
Okay. We see words.
So we're running from here.
See, I don't have the work that we did here today.
Thank you. All right, we will continue moving forward and our consent credits is next. So I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So move.
Support.
Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. Consent items are approved as presented. Next, we have a closed session for this evening and pursuant to open meeting at section eight B for student discipline. And I would entertain a motion to enter into closed session at this time.
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. We will move into closed session at six twenty one. Okay, we'll roll back into open session at six forty eight. And that brings us to the discussion portion of our meeting. And discussion item A, intro to livestock and companion animal textbook recommendation. Jen is presenting.
I am. You will find attached there a quote for a textbook for our ag science program. This is something that Brent Blatt and I have been working on and it's me that he has in his program. He's been using a free sample of this book for the last many years and it's time for us to get a proper textbook for those students and the digital access. So you will find that there is a quote there for just over four thousand dollars for forty students to have access to that material and for the teacher. And then in addition to that, you will see if you are interested in looking at the textbook, there is information about how we can do that. And of course, we will have that available for anyone who is interested in taking a look at the really granular detail of that material and compliment increasing it for the next thirty days before we would ask that the board might be action on possibly adopting that resource. So I'm glad to answer any questions in my opinion.
So if anyone wants to see the textbook, they would contact your office.
Absolutely. And Robin has access to this as do I. We're working on physical copy here, but it is really difficult to get physical copies of textbooks at this time. Everyone is on that order right now. So even some of the materials that we adopted last spring, we still have not received. Because there is still a paper shortage and a shipping problem. So where we asked for, we asked for that book, but the digital access gives us everything that is in the physical book.
Another benefit of digital, I guess.
Absolutely, one hundred percent. No shipping required.
It's internet.
Yep, exactly.
Any other questions or thoughts from the board? Okay, all right. Thank you. We'll move forward to the East Coast trip with Jen and that is on for action tonight.
It is. And you might remember that we talked about this in our last meeting, but I had not uploaded the document, which is now there. Kind of sharing the plan for that trip. And as you know, a well-loved trip here in Cedar Springs and something that gives our students a great experience with some travel outside of town here. So I'm glad to answer any questions you may have about that, but we are no longer opening with action until.
You're trying true. Okay, no questions. Thank you. And next we have potential athletic overnight trips. I don't see Matt, so.
I will take that one as well. We do this proactively for trips where athletes may be going overnight because they've moved to a different level of competition. Given the board policy on the timeline between asked for, you know, some discussion and then action two weeks later. Often that timeline doesn't fit with any regional or state competition. So that has gathered the trip, the coaches who would say, if we make it, then we'd like to go. And here's approximately when we know the dates are. So that's being proactive and assuming that our athletes are going to show.
Well, everybody needs to go. Any question?
Thanks, thank you.
Discussion I M D is the Fall twenty twenty two Neola Board Education Policy Updates. And Scott's going to be sharing one of them.
Thank you. So this is our second read on this collection of recommended policy updates from Neola. I did add one policy update. It's a policy sixty four twenty four on purchase cards. This was one that we missed from last spring. And the, it was missed as Chris was transitioning out and Marty was transitioning in. It was in a stack of papers with a post-it for Chris to review. So Marty has reviewed it. The only addition, and you'll see in the redline version, is adding or designate. So it basically says the superintendent for designate can approve an individual having a purchase. And that designate would be our Director of Business and Finance, Mr. Marty Sullivan. So other than that, are there any questions from board table on any of those proposed changes from Neola?
We have one more vote before a vote. Looks like going once, going twice. Looks like we're good for tonight. Then we will move to the work session part of our meeting while we can. Absolutely. And first up, we have our Fall twenty twenty two District Achievement Data Review with Jen.
Yes, and I've added a couple of things for legislative requirements on this. So you'll notice that we'll talk a little bit tonight about data review for fall data. We'll take a little bit of a walk back to spring, but mostly looking at fall data. And then there are two opportunities for us to hit the required things for the legislature. So ninety eight E reporting is one of them. And ninety eight C is a new funding opportunity that we have that we'd like to share with you this evening.
Oh, geez. Now. Now I'm going to.
You are.
Yeah, and then something.
A gender review.
Hold on.
Should we go to a meeting quick view?
There we go. Thank you. Okay. Find it.
That's the Neola Fund.
There we go. Right here. All right, let's see if I can beat the mouse. So who we are, I wanted just to do a little demographic view with you. We shared this in this room earlier this morning about what are our demographics here in Cedar Springs? So the number that you see there is slightly higher than what we've been sharing with you because it's based on last year's enrollment. So three thousand three hundred and sixty nine is in fact higher than the number of students that we have this year. But this data is based on who we were last year and what the demographics are that we can glean from countywide data, but then also from power school and how our students demographics fall out. So you can see there the number of discipline referrals, how many students and conventions we have had, our high-risk suicidal tendencies per week, which is pretty noticeable and something that we do spend time thinking about in terms of our M T F S work, our students living in poverty, our students on target for literacy and math. And then what, how our students fall out in terms of identification and L G B T Q I A plus, white students and then Asian, Black, Hispanic, Latino, American Indian, Native Hawaiian, Oceanic Islander. So I think it's just important to represent who are we and who are the students we are serving here in Cedar Springs. And that drives a lot of the work that we do. So when we take a look at our fall data, we have a ninety eight B legislation reporting again this year. And when you click on this link, it takes you to a document that may look familiar that shows our reading and math scores from across this fall. And we will, I will do a deeper dive on this because it's really just our fall data. It doesn't help us to see if there's growth yet. But you will see that if we have fewer than twenty students in a subgroup, we're asked not to report that by the state because it would be skewed data. So we're only reporting where there are more than twenty students. R means reading, M means math. And it's sharing with us what percent of students have already met the end of year benchmark. So if you think about a third grader, we would not expect them coming into third grade to already have mastered all of the third grade reading and math work. That would be ridiculous. There'd be no need for third grade teachers then if that had been the case. So we would expect these numbers to be as they are, that students are arising. And what we're noticing when we dig in a little bit deeper is that they are prepared for meeting the grade level content at the beginning of the year right where they should be. Most of our students tapped in an area that shows that they've mastered what they should to be at this point or they're ready for the next step. So that's really fantastic news that we have about seventy percent of our students who are ready to start the grade level that they're in. That's worthy of celebration, I would say. So I will update you more on ninety eight B as those reporting requirements come in February and June again to share with you what percent of our students have grown over the course of this year. And that will be more meaningful at that time. Really where we are, our M T F S work continues. And just as a reminder, M T F S means multi-tiered systems of support. So we really have three links that we're running quickly in. The first one is behavior and we've had a lot of experience with this as it's been one of our goals for about seven years now. So our positive behavior interventions and supports at the elementary level and our positive school climate work drives much of what our principals and our M T F S teams are doing on days like today and on our halfway time. They're moving their team through an action plan that they've created that is our continuous improvement plan. In literacy, we've spent a lot of time at the elementary level getting our literacy in alignment with the science of reading. Thank you for helping us adopt a resource that really gets us there. Our secondary folks are stepping into secondary content literacy this year. So that, think of that like when I'm in history class, I'm reading like a historian. When I'm in a music class, I'm reading like a musician. So it's helping students to realize there are different purposes for reading and different things you pay attention to as you're reading, depending on the discipline or the content area. And then in math, we are the first in the county to have a pre-K twelve math committee that is doing M T F S work on instructional math practices. And we're lucky to have lots of support for that. So our math team took what we call the tiered fidelity inventory for reading. It helps us to know, are we doing the right things that are evidence-based? And they made their own for math. We're the first in the county to have done that. And really our I S D is helping a lot, but also encouraging us to scale that up and share it with our other local groups. So that's very exciting work. And that makes up the bulk of our multi-tiered systems of support work, which is also our continuous improvement work. All right, so where are we more granularly? Well, in terms of literacy, at grades three, four, six, and seven, based on the M step, which I'm going to call a lagging indicator, that tells us how we did last year. It doesn't tell us how we're doing right now. It's kind of an autopsy of how did we do last year? And really because we received the scores so late, it doesn't help us take action on those right away. So it gives us trend data, but it doesn't give us as much as what we do more locally in the fall. So we've seen increasing literacy scores, which is bucking the trend because of what's happened with COVID. Many districts are still experiencing a decline in their literacy scores. I think it's possible that that may be because of our new alignment with our E L A resources and the attention we've put on that tier one instruction for all students in the classroom being aligned. We have some decreasing literacy scores in grades five, nine, and eleven. And some reasons for that may be still consequences from this intense global pandemic we've been through. It also could be that we have some mixed fidelity in the use of the curriculum. We know that to be true as we're working on implementing things with fidelity. And at the high school level, it's been since the nineteen eighties since they've had a resource adoption. So we certainly couldn't expect something that was created in the nineteen eighties to be aligned to the standards today. So we're working on improving that area and I plan to bring with the help of the high school E L A department a resource adoption to you in January or February for us to consider for next fall. And then mixed ups and downs in math. So last year, Sammy Tenhave, our math champion, did some work with really targeted folks at each grade level to implement the beginnings of what we've decided to implement across the system this year. In those classrooms in particular, where she implemented something last year, we saw tremendous gains from those students. The data from those teachers and students was phenomenal. So we have great hope for what's coming this fall with the teachers having implemented that across the whole system. So those are all really fantastic things to just consider and take a look at the reality of where we were according to our spring scores. Where are we right now in terms of our fall scores? We use an Akadis test at the elementary level, which is a reading test that's done one-on-one with students and a trained reading assessor. And our scores are starting to go up. So that's very exciting. We expect that trend to continue. I'm going to put a trend line in here. We've been giving that assessment for three years now. And the trend line, when I, when I put it in there, I don't want to put the down trend line in there. It didn't look so happy. So the reading trend line looked like it was going to continue to go up and we should be in the sixty, seventy percent range in the next three to five years, which is very exciting. The math does not look so happy. And you may remember from, and this is really just K five. You might remember when the math teachers did their presentation last year, they shared that the resource they had been using for the last six years was not at all aligned to the standards or to how students learn math. So we would expect that the outcomes would look like this. It's us that has the symptom problem, not our students. Our students aren't the ones who are wrong. It's our system and we're getting that back in the line. So we expect that that will also rebound in the next couple of years. So what's ahead? Well, our M T F S teams met this fall and based on the work that they've done with Steve Johnson, their data review shows that where we're heading for pre-K through fifth grade, we're installing an intervention system. And that will be alignment and all the things you see listed there, alignment in training, alignment in scheduling, alignment in the use of which resources are we using to intervene? How are we deciding when students need an intervention and when we can celebrate that they don't need an intervention anymore? So all of that mindset work and then system building, Joy Gallup is leading that and she's leading our district this year and doing a fantastic job. In addition, we're going to continue strengthening our tier one teaching in literacy and math for all students. Today, our K five teachers all worked on learning more about bridges their math resource for three hours this morning. So and the early data from them looks like it was quite valuable to help move them one step forward in feeling confident and competent in using their resource. In grade six through twelve, the content literacy work will continue. And as I mentioned, we'll be looking at adopting a nine, twelve E L A curricular resource so that we do have something aligned to the standards and that teachers can work in and not create their own adventure. In addition, we have action plans for proactive, instructive, and restorative classroom management, family engagement, and work on Red Hawk Pride. So that's where our M T F S teams are working and what their action plan indicates will be worked out over the course of the year. And then beyond that. All right, yep, I'm going to move to the next part. So any questions about that data update in terms of our achievement for this year before I move to the next part?
I would help with questions.
Sure.
Can you again come with P B I S's?
Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. So it's really taking a look at what you can do, not what you can't do. So instead of saying, Jeff, don't write with pen. We would say, you use a pencil, right? It's, it's flipping your mindset to be on the positive, to catch kids doing the right things, to recognize them when they.
Catch kids doing the right thing.
Yeah.
And then increasing scores in literacy in three, four, six, and seven. Congratulations. Decreasing literacy scores, literacy scores in five, nine, and eleven. One of your comments here is mixed fidelity and use of curriculum. Can you tell us what that means?
Yep. So whenever you adopt something new and as a teacher, there are a lot of belief systems you have about what you're using. If you don't believe that that resource is going to be the best thing you can use, you may not use it the way it's intended to be used. So part of the work that we're doing with principals is doing some walkthroughs with them and a fidelity checklist of boy, this is year two of that resource. We would expect to be seeing these things present in classrooms and then helping them to make an action plan if we're not seeing those things so that we get people back on the right train, on the right track, moving in the right direction.
Are we able to see which students have which teachers in the previous period and we're focusing on that?
Yep. Yep. Any other questions?
I wondered how you got the information of the percentage of L G B T Q I A plus students.
So as I said, that is based on county and national averages. So we don't ask our students to report that. Stacy just shared that with me today. So I'm just saying Stacy's words. She may want to share that instead.
Do you know how the county gets that information? Is that based on like a self-reporting survey or?
Probably, I'm not sure. That is based on our national average, L G B T Q, which is four point five. And for all those percentages that she showed, we just rounded it out around the value. We know that our students are much like others around the county and state and nation.
I just wondered because I, I know a lot of, there's surveys that get put out and I know that students aren't necessarily going to be truthful on those.
Absolutely. Yep, we do our, we do the youth risk assessment survey. And I have not seen the results from that, but they took it this past spring, I believe. I think they'll take it in the Eden Springs. I think Brad will know. But.
Seven. I think that was a great student.
Yeah, yeah, every other year.
And those, that's a random selection of students, Cracker? Is that the whole grade?
That's the whole grade.
Oh, okay.
And then we get the countywide averages and the statewide averages on that as well.
Thank you.
Third question. Any others? Okay, so I'd like to move into ninety eight C, which is a new Essar spending plan that came up kind of sprung a moment like the bro, we have extra money we'd like to give you. So it's, it's asking us that we keep it in alignment with what we had already planned with Essar. So I want to remind you of this lovely graphic from about a year ago when Chris Lahey and I said, we're planning to spend the large bulk of Essar two and Essar three on classroom furniture staffing and instructional reports. So this is something that will be asking for public comment. It will go on our website and maybe will help us with some social media. So this presentation will be available to others and there is a feedback starting there from people to let us know. Yep, this is in alignment with what we think best steps forward are or no, we see some adjustments. So what is ninety eight C? Well, ninety eight C is about fifty-two million dollars in federal funding that will be divided equally per pupil in Michigan for those who apply. And it's part of the gear funding that fell under all of the COVID funding that we received. We're required to use it to address learning loss. And I'll just share with you that I'd like to push back on the words, learning, loss. Loss means you had something that went away. I'd like to call it unfinished learning because that's really what it is for many of our students who had spotty attendance or were away because of COVID. They did not have the opportunity to finish their work. It's not that they lost something that they already had. It's that they didn't finish it. So we're required to use this either for high-quality assessments, implementing evidence-based activities, or monitoring student academic progress. Thankfully, all of those things fall in alignment with what we are already doing. So we're seeing this as an opportunity to further the path of work that we're already on. We could also use it for providing information to parents and families who are in remote learning. We don't have any of those right now. Or we could use it for tracking student attendance and improving student engagement for those who are in remote learning. But again, we don't have any of those. So that's why I grade those out because we wouldn't consider using the funding for things that we don't actually need. So I'm going to have Marty talk about this slide a little bit, which he's added to from about a year ago.
Yeah, so I think if you look at this chart about a year ago, there were maybe six columns. So we added a few more. If you add up all of those funds cumulatively, so this is inception today. So as of last Friday, what we have spent with Essar COVID-related grants were approximately at just over four point seven million dollars that we've expended as our one, two, three, and all of various COVID-related grants that we've been awarded. The top five buckets would be the addressed. The top five buckets would be the address learning loss or continuing learning as Jen would like to call it. That accounts for about forty percent of what we have spent. So that is uh software systems that allow our students to go remote, um, new curriculum, um, professional development, and also bringing on additional staff to allow us to keep our staff or class sizes down. So each student has more uh contact with their instructor. Uh, the, the next largest bucket would be the purchase of uh technology for our students and staff. Um, so uh prior to COVID, we were not a one-to-one district, correct? So COVID kind of forced all districts to really quickly go one-to-one so that remote learning could be provided. The next largest bucket would be planning and uh implementing summer school-related activities. So that's, we've spent over the last two summers, a little five hundred thousand dollars on summer school and credit recovery for our students. We also have uh providing the resources that the principals need to continue operations. So that is a little four hundred thousand dollars that primarily relates to subs. Classroom subs and uh support staff subs. Obviously, uh all districts were experiencing teachers were catching COVID, support staff were catching uh COVID. So we needed to have subs readily available to continue uh providing services to our students. And then the final one, uh in implementing evidence-based activities. Those are the champions that Jen mentioned, our two math champions, and then the ad technology champions. And so those five uh buckets account for about eighty-five percent of that four point seven million dollars that we've expended.
So this one would then add to that tallest column, true?
Right.
Yeah. And Monty, what are your estimations about how much money that might be for our district?
Well, then, number varies.
Right. It will depend on how many districts apply?
So it could be as low as thirty-seven dollars per pupil, but I've also heard estimates up to a hundred and nine dollars per pupil. Perhaps, so it is a pretty wide variance between the high and the low of funding that we may receive. But we don't anticipate every single district throughout the state applying for these funds.
So what have we already done for what the legislation is calling learning loss? Well, we've already implemented evidence-based practices in, with our math and literacy res- resources and supports. We've already kept class sizes smaller so that students can have more individualized attention and when COVID was happening, so they could be spread out a little bit more. We've diagnosed, diagnosed gaps and adjusted our instruction based on the assessments that we've used. We are starting an after-school program that is um with some of this funding for a very targeted group of students. Um, that's actually starting later this month and Courtney McDonald is leading that work. And you know, we've had summer programming for the last three summers as well. Um, in addition, our new instructional resources and strategies have been supported by those instructional specialists. Um, so Andy Kim, Katie Moore, Sammy Tenhaves, and Carl Shuntz are all working on helping teachers to implement evidence-based practices and helping principals to know how to lead that work as an instructional leader. So what are we going to do next? Well, because like you heard me say, one of our big to do this year is an intervention system. We'd like to focus on intensive and targeted intervention. Um, it makes sense to do what we were planning to do and have a chance to do it even better than we were planning because of this extra money. It allows us to have interventionists available who will help students with targeted social, emotional, and academic needs using evidence-based interventions and reading math and behavior. And then to continue to install those related to the science of reading and AVMR, which is our math recovery resource for intervention. So we'd really like to use the funding for that. Um, we are required to measure our impact and so it makes sense to do that with the ways we are already measuring our impact. So looking at our data reviews three times a year for our MTSF work, looking at our I-ready scores, our CKLA assessment at the end of units, our AVMR results. And like I shared earlier, students who've been exposed to the AVMR intervention have seen almost one and a half times more growth than their peers who were not exposed to it last year. So that's very exciting and we would predict that that would continue this year. We'll look at our Akadis reading results. We'll look at how many of our teachers and interventionists are trained in this intervention. That's an important measure. As Stacy and I sat and planned probably three years ago now, how do we make sure everyone gets this training? And we're well on our way to doing that with Sammy and Carl. Um, getting that work done and being some of the few in the state really who are able to train and be right here on our campus, training our very own people. And then we'll look at our SWIFT data related to behavior and those are all measures that we would use anyway in the normal course of business that we're doing this year. We'll just be able to report that for the reporting requirements for ninety-eight C. And then lastly, of course, we're required to share the plan. So um tomorrow, this will go on our website. We will put it in parent newsletters. Of course, here at the board meeting, we're allowed to answer any questions that arise that you have or that you hear about. Um, and then the feedback link there uh is open until November twelfth because we do need to apply by mid-November for this. And then the funds are available um in our winter state aid payment. So we'll be able to have them this fall. So I'm glad to answer any questions that I can for you about that ninety-eight C segment.
So just to reiterate, for measuring impact, there isn't any increase in testing of students. We can use what we're already using.
That's always our goal, Heidi. We don't need to assess them more. We need more time and instruction. Absolutely. We'll use what we already have.
I would just make a couple of comments if I might. Number one, um and the work is all available through this presentation you've given us, but I've heard you say a couple of times, we should see those scores increase in the next two to three years. And I would challenge you and you and you to find a way to use this money to not wait two or three years and find out that a student got missed or a group of students got missed. But and, and I don't know how I do it. I'm not an educator, but you know, we got to do that half that time somewhere before last year. Um, and, and begin with all the things that you're planning and spending this money with. I'm sure you can work that in. But that would, that would be uh my challenge to everybody is how do you avoid a two to three-year delay? Get kids up to, up to speed. So it's more to get back to learning if they never finish.
That's the fire in my belly too. We cannot leave them behind and we cannot wait for something magical to happen. We have to plan for it to happen and then implement that.
My other comment would be um forty-four percent of our students live in poverty. How can we get food to those kids every day? And we kind of touched on it here and there from time to time and um I would challenge us to figure out how we can use some of that money to do that. And again, I don't know if it's within the legal realm of what that offers, but it's something we should consider with that.
Ninety-eight C does not allow for that because it's only related to learning, learning loss. Um, but there might, it might free of other money that we may be able to use for that. And we do have some very partnerships globally of other organizations that help us get, we will introduce the hands of things we need.
Yeah, I mean, there's the federal free produce lunch program that we utilize and take advantage of our standing in ministries that we, we're providing resources. I don't know if we're catching all students.
Sure. I understand. I'm just, if, if everybody can have a free lunch, then we're going to catch every two in one. So you know, that's how I look at it. I, I, I'm not saying it's easy. I'm not saying it's financially possible. But it would be something that, you know, we've talked about, kids can't learn if they don't come to school with some basic things and want them in school. And that's something we can do something about with. What happens? I don't know what, you know, you kind of can't do that with this, but maybe we could bring up some dollars and so. Thank you for presenting.
Absolutely.
I would just, I would just appreciate uh the fact that we get questions from time to time by members of the community and others, you know, about how did we spend the COVID dollars that are out there? And so I know we, we've shared the data before, but just including that as part of the conversation, we say, this is the look going backward. This is our plan going forward. It gives a very wide picture for the community to see uh where we're at and where we've been. So I appreciate you including that historical looking here as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. Right. Next item up for talking is the social emotional learning overview with Stacy also.
Yes. So I included in the workbook, that two-minute video for the sake of time. I can watch it another time because she kind of sometimes want to tell you anyway. Um, so social emotional learning is based with teaching skills that they need, teaching students skills they need so that they can um self-regulation skills, anti-anxiety skills. And one piece that I wanted to share about students in poverty, we are in Cedar Springs, according to the most recent census, double the rate of poverty, children under eighteen in poverty than you compare to Kent County local. So we have students in need. We have a lot of students in need. And so our social emotional learning is for everyone, all students. Um, suicidal tendencies, the data that Jen shared earlier as well. A startling thing, and I've talked to you guys about this before, a startling piece that we don't even realize is we did a whole suicide screening assessment before in the high school last year. We had sixty students that had suicidal thoughts and the vast majority were AP students. So the amount of pressure these students, and the amount of anxiety these students hold is monumental. It is making us question whether we're going to live or not. Social emotional learning helps address that, not only for students but for adults as well. For then, these primary goals as outlined in their state strategic plan is to support the health, safety, and wellness of all students. Social emotional learning helps make students, make individuals understand and regulate their emotions, successfully complete goals, take others' perspectives or point of view, and develop positive relationships and make responsible decisions, which is all, which are all things that students need with their learning. So K five, we utilized Second Step. It's been around for decades and it has been proven after a one-year trial of Second Step, um, students had greater reductions in physically aggressive behaviors, which also a data piece that was on Jen's side, is how many discipline referrals we have, you know, over three thousand last year. Um, so these students need help with this stuff. They can't do it on their own. And with COVID for two years, they were taught to stay away from kids, stay at home, keep your door shut because everybody's scary. There's lots of germs up there. So they didn't get to learn that they would have had the last two years. They didn't get to learn deep play. They didn't get to learn through neighborhood um conversations and, and friendships. So after one year of Second Step through their randomized control trial, students demonstrated improvements and teacher-reported social behaviors. Students reported pro-social goals. They had greater reductions than parent-reported anxious and depressive behaviors because it just kept, Second Step came five. So the data is clear. Second Step's been around for decades, that it is with kids and it helps kids clear the paths where they can learn. And then six twelve, we're using a new resource this year, Royal Trust Went Wellness. It's part of AMD as well. And they based the found that nearly fifty percent of all adolescents, nearly fifty percent of all adolescents are impacted by mental illness. Yet only twenty percent of those ever receive treatment. So fifty percent of our kids are struggling with mental illness. And another piece that we have in place on top of our SCL learning is our Red Hawk Cares. Um, and that's access to pine rats, counseling, so three free counseling services for all of our students and our staff and their family members. So we are doing our best to clear the path so that students can do the right work and receive support and stuff. And it starts with social emotional learning.
One question for me. So I, I know I've talked about this before.
So discipline referrals, like is there a dropdown where it gives a magic number or is it, when you kids got something off, is there, how do you, how is, how is that tracked?
Yeah, so we use SWIFT, um, which is a data documentation for all the discipline referrals. Um, any suspensions, we can throw it down by how many males in fourth grade, how many males in third grade during this time of day are getting off this front row. So we know where the issues are, who it impacts, and so we can further drill down and address what's going on instead of just kind of guessing. Well, I think lunchroom's crazy. No party to go into this room. So we need some. So we use SWIFT and we are in, we're three of us. So our fidelity is getting really, really tight from using that. So we can tell exactly day by day, day by week when there were issues um by area, by unstructured or structured time. So it's a really great tool to know exactly what's happening every day across the spectrum.
So we're looking at our systems that could be contributing to these factors as well as just the student's home life or other outlets. We're looking at our schools. We're looking at the things we can control.
We can't control where students are coming from. We can't control how much homework they were able to do last night or if they had a quality conversation by their day. We can't control if they live in mom or dad. We have a lot of students that look grandpa, grandpa, man, I'll go. A lot of students. So we are taking students where they come from and teaching them how to get what they need so that they can. And we are certainly looking at the system to make sure, do we have an issue here? And we are looking at lunchrooms because lunchrooms are that unstructured time where there's a lot of kids and we are making moves to make that a better, safer place.
Does that, like, I mean, because there's been talk about bullying. So in our district, um, do you see that decreasing or rising or, I mean?
That's a great question. So first and foremost, people want to understand what the term bullying actually means. Um, so it's real easy to say, I can bully. Now, sometimes we have to look in the mirror a little bit and recognize that someone pushing back on your behavior might not be bullying. Um, so we are constantly talking about what bullying is and what isn't. Um, we have different documents, documents that we use to do mental health team. I'm really, I'm really how to identify what bullying is. And then we certainly dig deeper, especially through the protected classes. You know, we look at, are they being bullied because race? Are they being bullied because of their um gender status or why are they being bullied and discuss that very quickly. So I think bullying is probably one of the main concerns for most school districts, um, but it's also a term that gets protection. So.
Still have okay to say and everything. So I just, obviously, social media, you know, and I just, the last probably few weeks, I've noticed it's been talked about and so maybe we could just stress that again, maybe in our, our newsletter, what we do or that it's.
Yeah, and additional support for pine rats that we signed up for through our student assistance program and employee assistance program. There's also a twenty-four seven crisis hotline. So okay, they send texts or send an email to the school on how they know, we'll make it eleven thirty at night. So there might not be someone spotting right that. Our pine rats collaboration, our Red Hawk Care, it gives them immediate access to a counselor at the time of year. So that's another step forward. Um, really, it starts with identifying why, what, are you really being bullied or are you feeling threatened? Let's talk about that and affect that. And that's where social emotional learning is definitely, is self-regulation, being able to look in the mirror and understand what you brought to the table.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify that okay to say, it, it depends on what you're reporting as to whether or not. Because I know sometimes they will send a police officer or sometimes you end up with an ambulance at your house. So it's not just a text or an email for every situation.
Thank you. I don't hear her phone, so.
You're welcome.
So are these programs that we are already using? Okay.
Yeah, Second Step's been around for at least thirty years at this point. We've been using Second Step here in Cedar Springs for six years. And our transfer wellness just shifted for our secondary just this year. And it is supported by AMD only in this case, so that's where we can jump on.
You make an interesting point that you can only work on things that are in our control. So to your point of bullying, you can't work on a parent who's uh who's showing that behavior and the child is learning from that parent that that is inappropriate behavior. So that has to be very difficult to deal with. But I, 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 so congratulations. I, I suppose our order to continue with this.
They're doing all the hard work.
I, I would ask you uh about counseling services and, and I don't know, um is there a stigma with counseling with students? I know my, my daughters both go to counseling. It's great. It's great for them. They love it. They, to this day, they still see somebody all the time and they talk about it. They, to their friends, to their parents, to other people. Is that what the students do i- in the schools today or is there a stigma? How do you get more people to talk to, to a counselor?
I think our school counselors are very bullying-wise. They, they deliver fifteen minutes throughout the day. They are working hard. Um, but I also think that the school is such a safe place for many of our students. Um, because going back to the LGBTQ conversation, um, we have a lot of students, not a lot, we have several students who want, who use a different name or pronoun here and don't at home. Um because going back to the L G B T Q conversation, um we have a lot of students, not a lot, we have several students who want, who use a different name or pronoun here and don't at home. And you don't want parents to know. And that is their right through M D and all kinds of other places. Um but that, it just tells me that the school is a safe place for our students. And then our counselors are just, they're out there and your high school counselors are out singing, playing the piano, so seeing those school counselors. And then they help diagnose that those students need some health, safety, and support. So is school counseling once ever so often enough? Or do you really need someone to dig in with you or go deeper on? Um just for the month of September, this might seem small, but it seems really big to me. Um for just a month of September, when we rolled out Red Hawks Care, we already had eleven students access the pine, uh access pine rest services in September. And so if you think about how short that was and the timeline for us rolling out marketing, eleven students already identified they need that and reached out to pine rests, which is very remarkable. So I think the stigma is getting broken down, but it also depends on how their home uses it. Now, if parents think that it's, we also had several students that we rate high risk for suicide and parents refused to give them service or support or help. And then we made parents sign off and have to call safety ads because they're not doing what the professionals were. To keep their case.
And that too is really one of the big um reasons behind the redesign of the office space at the high school. So if you walk into, when you go to the office now, there are two distinct entrances to the office. So one is a student services entrance and the other is the main office entrance. So the reason behind that thinking and the reason behind that intentionality behind design was that we wanted to create two distinct spaces for students to be able to go. And there is a stigma. We know and appreciate Mr. Simmons, but there is a stigma about going to the office, uh about going to the principal's office. And so by creating that student services center, yeah, they can go there and they're, it's, it's just a different experience. Even though it's the same room essentially, but uh but it's a different, it's a different space.
So is that sites, that staff in the office receiving training, um what they're watching for?
Absolutely. Regularly. I mean, counselors agree with them, they need the full mental health team in the month.
But the other, the other secretaries, they might be in power.
Yep, they are, several of them are trained in mental health personnel. So that's a triage way of identifying. Did my psychiatrist die or relapse that or is this something that really needs some mental health professionals? So they, uh we have about half our secretaries at this point training in mental health. So the Trails curriculum, the Trail to Wellness for Secondary, to address the bullying question just a little deeper. The things that the five counselors, they address are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision making. All those things will lead to better understanding of is this really bullying and how we get to the heart of that issue. So hopefully that will continue directly.
Um with the, the mental health and the counseling, the part of it. So we, we know that was forty, forty percent of, of our students are in poverty. I don't remember.
Forty percent.
That's ten minutes ago.
It's.
Um but I know when my daughter went through um some severe mental health issues, um we did get her help. And that cost us just monetarily thousands and thousands of dollars. Um on top of that, getting children to appointments and get, and having to take off work. Children in poverty, their parents might not have those options to take off that work to get to their child somewhere. Long story short, do you foresee it becoming overwhelmed what we have? And do we have a plan for if the counselor is booked out for three weeks and we've got a student that needs something or we have students that need more to be?
So here's two parts to my question. First part, um we have our research, our research all finishes here who are trained counselors. And if we're a Medicaid eligible family, that is the best resource to have. Um our pine rest, they have three for counseling sessions and then they work with the family to identify what is applicable, what is that next appointment step. And eighty percent of the practitioners are through telegraphing. So it doesn't, you don't have to, that was one of my first questions when I started getting into this is. Do our families have to drive all the way down to Grand Rapids? That's gonna be a barrier. And no, eighty percent of their counselors will come. And with the one-to-one devices, there shouldn't be a barrier. And really, even throughout the school day, if they need to meet with the mental health counselor because they're in crisis, all of our principals have spaces that these kids can go and meet privately.
Okay.
Um so part two of that was will our coun- our counselors overwhelmed and are they scheduled three weeks out?
Well, just, yeah, well, are they? Do you think they will be eventually if this catches on to become popular?
Are we serving the mental health? This COVID has really kept us all away from building relationships and moving the next step forward. That said, um our counseling staff, the four of them are located in high school and they did a beautiful process here. There is one day each week that they take that are their emergency days. And then they have also the backup. So if there's emergencies, they don't have to take the ten scheduled appointments and move them out. Someone is scheduled there and has their emergency response and they also have a backup. Which is pretty handy. It's a great way of.
Great. But there are, there are limits to what we can do. Of course, of course. Um I sit on the Kent County Children and Family Coordinating Council. And so there are, like Stacy said, a variety of agencies that are there to support. But, you know, even Sherry Health has a practitioner on campus, but they're six weeks out or six months out. Yeah, um there's a, there, there's a high demand. Um and a limited number of just experts, practitioners in the area. Um so we try to provide as much, you know, um scalable supports as possible.
I'm very grateful for all our counseling staff, mental health staff, all in the whole. Um they are getting really good at identifying what are things that is doable for them and what are things they need to return outside agency, which has been a big um push forward for us over the last couple of years. Because we just want to fix everything. If you're gonna, we want to fix everything, we want all of our kids every minute. Um and there are some things that are beyond our capacity and then they're really referring those outside agencies and building strong networks, relationships with those outside agencies. So that we can be right like every single kid, every single.
Thank you.
And those outside agencies are showing up more and more as far as wraparound services for students. That was another. Goal of three model of the office at high school is just to add more space for those who are stable because we all, I meant to. Step out of offices or share offices and that's what I'm convinced now it's even more walkable and comfortable for them. And that's sort of seeing the students, but you know, Mr. C is other organizations from the, realizing services. Even if, from referrals out there or family counseling this way around, if they're in, um supporting the children in school.
Our model is really setting the pace for many other school districts because of our networks and our collaborations. Because when we need help, we pull in the troops. And make sure that we can meet those needs right away, not wait three weeks, not wait six weeks, not wait six months. So it's, um, it's a great model and many people are time relevant.
If we want to dig in a little bit more to learn more about some of these, because there's twenty lessons, is that something where we just schedule some time to come in and have you walk through it?
Get you a login. It's um, see, Second Step is all through online.
Yeah.
So we get you a login, you can check them out.
Well, the, yeah, the, the Trails, um when I'd like, I'd like to be able to kind of review some of that just to kind of see, because it's new this year. People may be asking about it. I'd like to be able to kind of dig in and see a little bit.
Be more person because that one, you have to have a two-hour training for the access to your login. They want to make sure people are ready to do this. It's all, a lot of Trails curriculum. It also has a two-hole. One, it's great for kids, but it also is great for adults.
Yeah.
Adults learn so much and those things that we don't necessarily talk about for you all the time.
Yes.
Um they're learning a prayer alongside their students. So I'm happy to set a time.
Yeah, is that, is that, is that an online training?
The, yeah, the two-hour Trails.
Yep. Thank you.
And we have seventeen staff members, I think we've done it, and I can't recall the names.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's hard. Social emotional learning is getting a lot of negative press. And um there's voices out there that are saying that schools should just get back to the basics and teach reading and teach writing and teach math. But you can't teach students until you know the students and until you are able to support the whole student. It's. People who are saying that we should not be doing the social emotional supports have no idea of the dynamics and the challenges that we are facing as a society right now. They just have no clue.
Strength kindergarten. We have kindergartners who mess with children. So it's, it's, it's big. Kidney.
Well, unfortunately, to Scott's point, there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of people who don't accept that as part of what takes place in a school and. You know, I don't know what level that'll be, but there's going to be a lot of people who think that. It's going to be, bless your heart, it's going to be, continue to be difficult and perhaps even more difficult.
I have difficult conversations every single.
I'm gonna share some videos with you on Friday or, or when I send out the next uh Red Hawk Weekly from the students who shared today in the um. In the uh Lead, Listen, Learn events, the State of the Student event, uh that the K I S D put together and. Um you know, you'll hear the voice of one student who um said, yeah, I got an, I got an A M, I A P assignment. But what you don't know is that I was up till three A M doing. Um another student, one of our students from high school saying, you know, we're grounded. Um that's tough to do.
That's not fun. I mean, I feel bad. For what?
Because they want to go to the Ivy League school and they want to get.
Right.
The five on the A P exam and they want to get, I mean, it's, it's, it's all students that are struggling.
Not so students of power as well, students.
My daughter, who was stuck at home with COVID last week, was begging to come back to school because she was behind. And she was not, she was afraid what was gonna happen when she comes back to school. She hasn't been back to schooling.
So it's A P students last year when we were working through this suicidal fantasy. It was heartbreaking to hear the pressure they put on themselves. And the lack of self-awareness to say, okay, I need to talk to mom and dad about this. And he dials back. Just they pushed to be academically, they were very nuts. Everything else was so late, so I was wishing I could have gone.
Broader topic, I guess, related to this. So we talked, you talked earlier, there were some students that use pronouns that would prefer their parents not know. When we become aware of a mental health issue at school, do we share that with the parents? Because what we don't want to do is set a trap, right? So that's what I'm concerned about is where we know something and we don't put other people in the know that are around that student to go to.
Our first conversations are around, how can you bridge the gap between you and mom and dad? They are best supporters. Um so we try to bridge that gap immediately. That's our first thing to do is wow, can we, can we come, come together and help mediate a conversation? Because there's someone standing in the way of them being able to be their true self, come on with dad. Um because it, it doesn't sit well with anyone to keep secrets from mom and dad. It's just, it's not good for the kids, it's not good for anybody. Um but it's, some of these students do not feel comfortable sharing with their mom and dad. And then we start working on practicing how this conversation can go, what supports you can pull in. You know, that's always that truly, you can't trust mom and dad. Life is very dark. What we need to illuminate a little bit more and figure out that there are paths forward. There are things that can be done. And though your fourteen-year-old brain might be telling you mom and dad are the worst people in the world, it's not true. So let's find some time to grow. So that's always a great project for some of them.
But if there is risk, we are obligated.
Yeah.
Or if there's evidence of, you know, potential harm, you know, then, then that's a whole other lot of responsibility to get to have.
Yep.
It's heartbreaking work. And about every other week or so, I get some conversations, but I don't feel right calling this child something else. I was gonna go to name without their parents knowing. And I send the legal guidance and then we talk through what steps can we do? Who was that one connected adult that we can connect with this kid and see how we can move this forward? It's not how, we only get a nine months a year. We're only getting six, nine hours a day. They need that support.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Thank you, Stacy. We'll keep pursuing joy and learning. Even through those pieces, which brings us to our building updates with our leaders of joy and learning, and here they are. So first up, we have Cedar Trails Elementary School Principal Scott Carpenter.
Thank you. Being able to talk about Cedar Trails is put an honor. Um we are off to a great start this year. A couple things have already been mentioned. Um our bridges, uh learning that took place today, uh this morning. The feedback from the staff has been overwhelmingly positive, not just on the training, but also on the curriculum itself. So that's been very positive. And then that learning continued this afternoon in their P L C grade level groups. Uh so popping in between kindergarten and first grade and being part of those conversations. Uh conferences were also mentioned. We had uh just a great turnout last week for conferences. I think it did go smoothly to your point. We're still waiting for some attendance data to be filled into the spreadsheet, but we're looking at um mid-nineties of percent of parents turning out for fall conferences. So I take, take that as a, as a positive. Uh there seems to be a theme tonight with the P V I S. I just wanted to talk about that briefly. Um each class group has what they call a Hawk Squawk and they are earning Hawk Squawk gold. So um. I appreciate your question on the acronym and getting that clarified, that positive behavior is what we're looking for. And so students are being rewarded for that positive behavior on an individual basis. And our P V I S team is looking at now implementing what we call a golden Hawk Squawk. So staff members are looking for that positive behavior on a classroom level. So then each week their classroom would be going into a drawing and they could earn a golden Hawk Squawk statue that they would use for um the week and then they would pass it on to the next classroom that gets drawn. So we're looking for that positive behavior and then, and the research shows really that we're looking at a ratio of four to one. So four positive interactions to one negative interaction um from the staff member. That doesn't mean that, you know, that consequences aren't handed out when it's needed, but we're looking for that positive behavior. And then to briefly talk about Second Step, um it's also good to note that that is a once-a-week lesson for probably ten to fifteen minutes. So it's just a small portion of the, of the whole five. Um but we have been off to a fantastic start. And to also sort of answer your question, how do you combat when a student comes to school? And maybe isn't being modeled that positive interaction? It's about being um the staff member's model for them, but also building those relationships. Really, so each child that comes to school, comes to Trails, knows that every staff member in that building cares about them. And that opens up for that conversation to happen. So any questions from anybody? Any questions here? Good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, East Elementary School. We have Jen Cook presenting.
Um so I want to kind of talk about P V I S first. Um parents and I have been working really hard to implement some positive things. Um to catch those kids who might not always get things, um because they're always those model students. So we really wanted to honor that. Um so we have been doing perfect attendance awards. So we had a hundred and forty students in September that were on time and in the classroom. And then each month it starts over. So it's, if you get sick in September, you are clean slate to start for October. Um we tried to do that the first day of the next month. Um the kids were super excited. They get a certificate and get to take it home. So they were really excited about that. Uh we also have implemented positive office referrals and we're giving those about six to eight per week. And those are the kids who go above and beyond. Um we took our P V I S expectations, be safe, be responsible, and be respectful. And then we also added some academic things, being a team player, being a good listener um to there. And then they send them down, they get a little treat, I meet with them, I write a great note, and then they get to take those home. Um we had some really good feedback at conferences from parents who were like, my child had it. They put it up against their bed. We're not allowed to throw it away. We look at it every day. So um super exciting thing for them to experience. Uh we started noticing the volume in our hallways was getting really loud. So we started in the month of October, there are four hidden pumpkins and they do not happen until after announcements. And so when they're in the hallway, they're looking for them because the pumpkins go away if they're too scared. So then once they find, when they ask an adult to get it down, they go to um Heather Ross and she's our art teacher. And she has just a little tiny um eraser that they get, but they are super excited. And she has just a little tiny, um, eraser that they get, but they are super excited every day to find where those pumpkins are and they're looking everywhere. Um, we also have been doing, um, we've been booed by the classrooms. So we started one in second grade and in third grade. And it's just a bucket, the first one were like pencils and erasers for the class. And then they set decide who they're going to send it to next. And then they do that classroom. So we are almost finished with the whole building. So super exciting for that. Um, we are really, um, including our students in announcements. So once we do the class, um, I rotate between second and third grade. I spend a whole week in that class and they have four or five students who help do the announcements every day. So we get about twenty of those students, um, who get to go ahead. We started with one would just say the lunch count and then our three P V I S expectations. Now we're giving examples, like we will be safe at each elementary when we use our walk. So they're reading notes on the announcement. We, um, also wanted to empower ourselves because they're really hard to get. So we came up with, um, V I P tickets and they're golden. And they, if you're here for a full day, you get four of them. You get two before lunch and then two after lunch and they come down and get a prize for being those model students for this up. Um, and we've really seen, uh, impact empowering those substitutes to come back. We, for staff, we have really worked on team building. So we are having monthly pop ups. Our first month was tailgating. Um, we do it once a month during lunch. They bring in, um, last month, um, your Deco, we are in elementary school. They took spooky snacks to a different extreme. We had the lights off. It was really cool. They had a skeleton lady with cheese and everything all over it. Um, so they really, um, had a lot of fun with it. So it was really working on that team building. Um, when I did, um, walkthroughs with Sammy and Katie, um, we saw evidence of bridges happening. We also saw number corner happening in all the classrooms and C K L A door happening. So super excited about that.
Questions for Beach?
Yeah, just helping with P V I S. Now, I was having the impression it's teachers giving positive, feedback to students, but it's also students of student?
Students are, yeah. Um, parents might play the dean of students. He really sits down with those students, um, who are doing things, um, well and kind of helping model them, um, how they might improve their behavior. But once they are, they're giving feedback to each other as well.
Okay, sure. And, and do they know it is P V I S as well or we don't use that?
Um, they know it's, they heard P V I S, but they usually know it's V I P in our building. Very impactful person. That's what it stands for. Yeah, and it's be safe, be respectful and be responsible.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to announce Cedar View Elementary School Principal Sam Becker.
I'm going to continue with you guys' theme. So I like the questions they're going there. Uh, one of the things we're focusing on soon as soon is developing leaders, um, at Cedar View. So when we began in some team building with our staff, um, we realized with the P V I S framework, we wanted to, amplify some things, but before we amplified what's really good about it, we kind of had to tear it down. Um, so we've torn it down in August and now we're starting to build it back up, develop leaders, but also get student voice. So over the past three weeks, we've been building and taking applications to be part of the student celebration committee. Um, because we celebrate differently than the kids do. And so we want their voice in it when we do celebrate the great things happening at Cedar View. Uh, so they went through an application process, um, and we were searching for those leaders. We had two hundred and twenty-seven applicants, uh, which was overwhelming. It was awesome for the buy-in of the student body, but for our committee looking through it, it made it tough. Um, but last, um, it would have been Thursday, we, we narrowed it down to five fourth graders, five fifth graders. Um, we're going to have our first committee meeting Thursday morning. Um, they're going to plan. Um, they're going to help, bring in different ideas from students and then help us execute the celebrations when we are doing great things at Cedar View. Uh, so that's really P V I S for us. That's what we really focused on. Um, and we're excited to build those leaders, leadership skills, um, to the table for Red Hawk coming from Cedar View.
I do have a quick question.
Yes.
Since I went to a parent teacher conference at View and specifically talked about, okay, how can your child, work on leadership? So was that a focus then for every child or discussed, like at every conference for each child, looking at how they can become a better leader?
We are talking about leadership as a whole. Like that's a, that's, you know, we got academics. I think that's part of the S E L, um, is leaders within the building. So we are talking about that, um, every staff meeting. I actually have teachers, present a team that they were on that was functional and the great leaders in that team. And that could not just be a sports team. That could be a, a church community team. It could be a family team network. So we are talking about that as building, building wide. And that's trickling down.
So if you have two hundred and seventy-seven applicants and you, and you select five, yes, what do you tell the other two hundred and seventy-two?
Well, I, I'll be honest, Jeff, I don't think we'd get that many.
Sure, I understand that. Yes, that's a.
Well, I do a Friday video blast and I was, it, it was overwhelming and it was exciting. So what that tells me is that we have kids who want to buy into it.
Agreed.
Um, so I thank them, appreciate it now. Uh, but also then I think it's within those, the fourth graders, they need to then collect those voices, um, so that people are being heard. So then when we are doing celebrations, it's not just this one kid who gets their ideas, they bring it in all. And that's, I think, part of leadership.
Thank you. Welcoming to the floor, middle level Principal Minister Beau Calvo.
Oh, yeah. Great to know. I mean, the same background, I'll pace too much, uh, forward to and from. Um, so what I'll offer here is just a bit of a stand chat, but I always welcome, please, if you want to stop by either Red Hawk or Middle School, if there's anything, Swiss data with, you want to see P V I S and what we have in the buildings and how that lives and breathes, please come to the middle level somewhere and I'd be more than happy to walk through that with you at either of those buildings. Um, I want to start by giving a huge shout out to Red Hawk students and staff. Um, there's actually construction going on there. You guys know that at all? Um, and then, you know, we were going to have, uh, parent open house and then construction ran a little late. And so, the staff and students have been amazing there and really made the most of it and built some amazing culture and bonds and just rolled with it and a lot of great, like, energy in that building. I just want to give them a shout out after the start of the beginning of the year. Um, and they just keep it going. Uh, we, we really did intentional this year with when to do our celebrations. Um, we want to put the emphasis on when you're here, you're learning, you're working hard and we aren't taking those kinds of interruptions to learn or constantly happening. Or maybe this team's celebrating and this team's celebrating and both teams are all fast. So we really had like, all right, when we celebrate with our team as a whole and be intentional around that. Um, and our first one was, uh, fitness pools that I actually, our fundraiser, where we did a little of the S E L work. And then we celebrated our character traits that we have a monthly trait that we celebrate with our students and we, we kind of call them tools for their toolbox. Like these are great things like integrity, responsibility, grit, like those, those skills that go beyond just reading, writing arithmetic there or being a good citizen. Um, and on that day, we, we did some of our S E L work, uh, with students just talking about how are you feeling? We talked about fitness pools and the benefits to being fit, just not only physically, but mentally as well as a stress reliever. And, and then also fundraising to be able to have more of those celebrations and gather the funds to reward kids, uh, whether it's our weekly tickets that they get the grab box. I told them, I told my staff, it's like lots in your read. I used to have a pride box that like even if it's sixth grader, I want to walk by and grab something out of. Just a little trinket to make it more fun for kids and have some funds to be able to inject that into the learning environment. Um, and we raised roughly, uh, ten thousand dollars to be able to do so at the middle level and have a little more funding for us, uh, to have positive experiences, uh, through their year, uh, in the middle level. Um, we've been really driven by data as well. Um, this, this, today was looking at stakeholder data. We looked at Swiss data as well, uh, to look at when are we seeing what times and it's broken down to the fifteen minutes. And it's really fun to look at because you can see like these two really big spikes. And it's like, oh, those are when the lunch periods are at both Red Hawk and the middle school. And that must be a passing period because those are the next tiers. And how can we be intentional there for our students? Is it, uh, teachers being out in the hallways and staggered release times for the students? So just using some intentionality around that data, uh, being able to look into that. Um, the biggest one though is we had six hundred and twenty-six of our middle level students, uh, take part in the survey and it's like a three-minute survey. Um, they were able to talk about, you know, uh, roughly eighty percent of our students know our core values of respect, responsibility and safety. Um, and that was by early October, which is amazing that eighty percent of middle level students can name respect, responsibility and safety, which means we're announcing them, we're using them, we're speaking through that lens of choices and what we see students doing. Um, and also, uh, it was just under eighty percent of our students that a staff member had recognized them within the past week for something they were doing. If you think about, again, the middle level students being able to say that while eighty percent of them had received a compliment from an adult, that's outstanding. So that was really good work to see. Um, something that I'm going to say that is our goal moving forward. Um, I've given this survey for the past three years with staff and one of the questions is, do you have an adult at the building that you feel you can go to and are connected to? And normally it's about seven percent say, no, I don't. Um, this is the first time I've given it that it was a hundred percent that I do not feel a connection with an adult, which is like, wow. So that's really big for us and we were intentional within. Our staff got to look at it, look at the list. And it's not like, hey, Timmy, you know, I've talked to you forty-five times here. Like, what are we doing? We're calling students up. But we can really be intentional for, how can we get to that learner and help support them and some of that? And we also can do an adult outside of school that you connect with as something. And we found that five percent of our learners said, no, they're both adult in school and out, which can really support us on how we'll be supporting that individual or that young learner to have an adult in their corner. Um, so that was some of the powerful work we did today. Um, the last thing is moving forward, um, our assistant principals, uh, at the middle level, Courtney and Shelley, went over sort of practices professional development. Because we're always trying to grow on that with how we can support students, um, when those positive behaviors aren't there and we're building that tier two, tier three. Um, what can we do to really support learners and learning from those mistakes as they grow? So again, please, if there's anything that I just said that you want to touch base on at another time, you are always welcome in the building. Um, and we'd love to be able to support you with some of that thinking too. But anything for starters? Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, winding up with high school principal, Mr. Todd Simmons. And with all that joy about it, kind of give to you, it's just very.
Well, I want to thank you guys for allowing us to do this. Uh, that was tremendous professional development for me, just stealing ideas from teammates and the great things they're doing for our younger kids. I'm going to take, uh, an instructional support team approach or methodology. So I'm going to share with you some of the positives or strengths that we're seeing in our building, uh, some of the concerns or struggles that we're having and then solutions that we're, um, engaging in with those struggles or those concerns. And, uh, we talked a lot about education at its greatest potential or pinnacle is like a three-legged stool. And the three legs of that stool that hold up that, uh, education to its potential as student, excuse me, the parent, and then the educator. So starting with positives that we've seen from our students, um, just been so, so, so impressed with our kids here and the ownership that they've taken on. You know, they feel empowered overall. And we saw that this summer with the seniors taking over the parking lot and painting their spots. We've seen in the way that they control our P A. You know, we've got our P A working now and our kids do the announcements every day at the start of school and they do the end of the day announcements, which is kind of cool to see that type of ownership in their education. We see it at, at lunchtime and the way that our kids leave their cafeteria better than they found it. In fact, tomorrow, I believe one of our seniors who's the exemplar of leaving their caf, her cafeteria better than they found it, uh, is going to be interviewed, I believe by Wood T V A. Um, it's, it's really cool to see our kids owning their school. Uh, that's something that I'm very proud of. In terms of parents, um, you know, I'm new here, uh, but I can't tell you how supportive our parents have been of us. Now, it could be because I haven't irritated them yet. Um, but regardless, just tremendous support coming from our parents and, and their communication with us in our, in our building. And then with our educators, you know, I, I, I make it a goal every day to never be in my office. I want to be where the, you know, the magic happens. I try to be in classrooms in the hallway all day, every day. Um, and I can tell you in my short experience here, we have tremendous educators. Educators who have high expectations, a high bar for depth of knowledge and higher thinking skills. I don't know, I, I, I was at a very high performing school for seventeen years that really, really valued, uh, academics and extracurriculars and the arts. And, uh, I just believe for whatever it's worth, uh, that we should be proud of what our educators are putting into our kids on a daily basis. Concerns, um, or some struggles that we're having first with our students. Um, we're struggling with the, the vaping, uh, and the dab pens, like many schools across our great nation. And, uh, it ties directly into something that Ms. Moskell spoke about with such passion that really, really resonated with me is we've got kids struggling so much with their mental, emotional health that they're resorting to self-medication. You know what I mean? Where I came from in Formosa, Australia, uh, a lot of my kids, they're self-medicated with oops, you know? Here we have kids self-medicating with the vape for the dab pen. And I'll get to some solutions here of how we're going to try to attack that. Uh, in terms of parents, um, I can't say we're having a lot of struggles or concerns. I just want to continue to try to connect with them and, and build a relationship with them so that they, uh, feel that we're all on team Timmy or team Jane. You know what I mean? That we're all in this, uh, for the same purpose and that's to make sure that their student reaches his or her personal best. And then finally with educators, you know, we, we worked on it again today. We're really trying to build our communication and trust, uh, among our team at the high school. And, and that's not incriminating what it is, is that we've just got, um, like Mr. Duffy and Ms. Myers, or she's a pop P V I S, uh, leader. They're just overwhelmed with the amount of, um, and our counselors are as well, just overwhelmed with the amount of, us, you know, kids struggling with behaviors or struggling with just their mental, emotional health that there isn't that communication chain between educator and office. And we're trying to solution that. And I'll share how we are doing that. First of all, with our kids, they're struggling with the vaping, uh, with the dab pens, with the, um, just their mental, emotional health. Ms. Moskell shared better than I could how we're having an, or a counselor always at the ready to serve those kids in need. But Ms. Peoni just told me on Thursday, she had a great conversation with one of our kids struggling. She said to her, that student, I'm good at what I do, but I can't move as quickly as a vape. You know what I mean? And her point in sharing that was you've got to work with me with perseverance and stay away from that, you know, that device. Um, these are just the authentic and transparent conversations we're having with those kids who are struggling with that self-medication. The other thing that I met with Mr. Smith on Friday afternoon and we're going to try to continue to educate kids and parents on the dangers of vaping, dab pen, but we're also going to have to be a little bit more aggressive in our next steps afterwards. And, and we're going to be communicating that out to all three legs of the stool here shortly and how we're going to be more aggressive with that. Uh, in terms of parents trying to engage with them so that we're all on the same team, I just have to continue to change my best with my communication. The more I communicate, I think the more that I can build relationship and the more that we build a relationship, the, the better we can be in a cohesive unit. And if finally, in terms of educators, uh, and building that communication and trust between the office and the classroom practitioner, um, I think we made some big, big, big hay today, uh, by Mr. Duffy kind of speaking on what his process is, Ms. Meyer and her P V I S process. And I think we're going to continue to grow, uh, that communication and trust. So, uh, overall, I, I, I'm just proud to be here. You know what I mean? You guys have great kids in this community, we have tremendous educators and, uh, the parents, like I said, have been nothing but, uh, supportive. So. Did, what questions do you have for me?
I, I would just, uh, we went over the literacy score going down, two in the three grades going down on your building. So the challenge to you is to figure out how to get two to three years down the road before we figure that out. So I can challenge you for that. I appreciate your presentation tonight. It sounds very exciting. Great to have you here. So push, push through on those things. Again, I'm not an educator. I don't know how to do it, but you're the order. I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Principal, you.
Thank you so much.
Unless you want to stay for more. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Next up, preliminary beach design update with Scott and Russell.
Yeah, um, so Russell had to go, um, but I did include in your board back. Um, four slides, uh, one is even just a cover, so it's, uh, not exciting at all, but, um, just preliminary looks at what we're considering for Beach Elementary School in terms of a potential design for the new building. And so what you're looking at, um, is, um, two versions, um, obviously a different shape than what we're accustomed to, but the image uh, on the left-hand side, uh, would be the, the ground floor, the first floor. Um, the space, uh, in the, in the center part of the building, you'll see the gymnasium, you'll see the cafeteria. That space would, would stay the same we would. We're proposing to expand the cafeteria, take over the music room and make that space a little bit larger for the students at Beach Elementary School. Uh, the office is, uh, would be just to the left as we're looking at the drawing of the gymnasium. And then that's where the main entrance to the building will be, uh, in that, in that V. And then, uh, academic wings, uh, extending out, uh, on kind of that northwest to, uh, southeast, uh, parallel or, uh, that line. And then you'll notice a couple of classrooms, uh, down, uh, to the right of the, uh, cafeteria and to the right of the gymnasium. Those, those four classrooms, um, as we're looking at the building and looking at Beach, we're also looking ten years down the road. And there will likely be a time in the, uh, growth of Cedar Springs Public Schools that our elementary building will become K-five buildings. Um, you know, it's, it's convenient for us to have a K-two or K-one, two, three, four, five building, but there will become a time where we have to add another elementary building. And when that happens, it will likely be the case that we would then have four K-five elementary buildings. And so we're really looking ahead, um, in terms of our intentional design, uh, with this, uh, with this project. So those four classrooms, uh, to the far right side of that first board right, those would be intended as kindergarten classrooms. Um, purposefully placed, uh, adjacent to playground, adjacent to cafeteria, adjacent to gymnasium, really trying to keep their world, uh, as centered as possible. Now, it will work perfectly well as a second grade classroom or as a third grade classroom, but just know that there's a lot of thinking going in behind the scenes on this project. So the image on the right-hand side of the screen is actually the second floor. Um, and so because we're constricted with space, uh, with the water flow, the runoff that we've got, um, and, and, and just the way that the, the lot is set up and the fact that we've got an existing building, um, we have to be creative with the space. And so, uh, we have a series of eight classrooms, uh, up on the second floor. Um, again, thinking down the road, when it's a, uh, K-five building, you know, we would, we're building basically a four-section school that would support five hundred fifty students. Uh, that's the maximum size of an elementary building that you would want to have. If you have a five-section building, well, now you're pushing your numbers up to seven fifty to eight hundred students. That's a lot of students uh, in a space. And so a four-section building or a three-section building is more ideal uh, in terms of being able to create that community of learners, uh, for those K-five students. Um, and so that's kind of the initial concept. The next, uh, the next slide down is kind of an overlay of the, the new concept and the old concept. Uh, or the new building and the old building. It also looks maybe like a couple of Star Wars spaceships coming together and merging. You will see that part of the new building, uh, is sitting on top of the existing building. Um, and, and this is, if you, if you recall when we spoke, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, we were looking at that, the angle of that, uh, wing that comes off and, um, I suggested that they, they, uh, open it up a little bit more. So rather than having it be a, I think it was one hundred and five degree angle and I suggested even a hundred and fifteen degree angle. The reason for that is, um, when we build this, we're gonna have to take out some of the existing building. Um, and so by, by opening up that angle of that wing, we can, we can get by with impacting less of the existing building with the new construction. Uh, and it still functions and, and flows very smoothly on the site. And so we, we will be, uh, doing some work, um, it, it, it will be an interesting build. Um, we won't, uh, do the kindergarten classrooms or the extra four classrooms to the, um, would be to the east of the cafeteria and gymnasium. Uh, we will not do those, uh, while we're doing the rest of the building because there won't be room without taking off some of the classrooms in that, that other existing wing. I think there are third grade classrooms there now. Uh, and so we'll build those later, uh, but it will be, uh, very right away later. Like, so we'll take down, we'll, we'll build the new spaces. Um, once they're ready to go, we'll demo the other buildings and then we would jump into those other classrooms. So it gives us a chance to, to really maximize the efficiency of the work and maximize the efficiency of the space. And then the last drawing is just, gives you kind of a sense of the site plan and how we would utilize, uh, traffic flow and that type of thing on campus. You'll see, uh, reconstruction of the playground to the east of the building. You'll see a neat, um, uh, parking area with intentionality that's in between Red Hawk and Beach. So it gives us an opportunity to do some sharing of those resources. Um, that will also be in close proximity to our early childhood center. Uh, and so it will give us a chance to, um, uh, provide some staffing or staff partnering for the early childhood center as well as uh, freeing up some space in the front of that building for parent drop-off, uh, of students. Um, that little blue area at the bottom of the drawing you'll see is, um, uh, a space where we see, uh, having some reserved access for deliveries. Um, and like trash pickup, that type of thing, uh, maintenance, maintenance, um, uh, equipment and ma- maintenance vehicles. And so, um, you know, we're really trying to be super intentional with the flow and how this building sits on this site. I think I, we're getting close. I don't, I, this may be it. Um, you know, we met again, uh, last week. We, we meet every Monday at ten thirty. Uh, we didn't meet today because of P D, but, um, I think we're getting close to the concept. Uh, so any questions or wonders or thoughts in terms of where we are so far?
Tell me where the water issues are.
So the water. Yeah.
Wrong here.
So I'm gonna blow this up a little bit.
And this is, we're talking about retention ponds, correct?
Retention and then just flow. So, um, you'll see the line that runs from the playground and it kind of meanders toward that, um, blue, uh,
Good.
vehicle, uh, circle or, uh, access circle. That's all drainage flow through there. Um, and so that's technically wetlands. And so that's the, you know, that's the biggest concern that we've got. The space just to the east of the playground. Uh, and Vic, help me out if I'm missing anything. So this space, uh, to the east of the playground and then this whole area here is all part of that drainage flow out of the, out of the middle of the district.
If you drive by, let's see all the trees that follow Beach, the contour, they weren't planted there. That just would, if you look at, uh, maps in the past, over, overview, you can see that it just naturally just kept growing. And it's always been a, a constant drainage there, you know, to relieve all the pressure from Red Hawk. You're back the other way. So yeah, the pond, um, outside of blue, blue circle, but everything goes there. Um, I was, I was around the, the green blue in the visitor parking out there, you'll see my little circle. And that's what was created after they did the work at Red Hawk. So that's opening there, but when we leave, it's also going across the road into the big area.
Over into here. So we've got a retention pond here.
Right, that's what we recently put in.
Yeah. And then there's a big retention area here uh, that runs between us and Green Acres.
Right.
Yeah, and then the flow that pulls the water off that center part of the campus, uh, comes down along this area. And, and like Vic said, it, it runs along that tree line. You know, they could tile that with really big tile that might, may open up some other, uh, access in terms of usability of the location or the site, but the cost associated to that, that is pretty significant. Uh, we'd be, we'd be missing out on some instructional space in order to get some green space.
Then on the previous slide, you should be overlaying of the new over the old or the most of the current. You've got four classrooms you referred to out here to the right. What are the three classrooms adjacent to the gym for the rest?
These two? So one would be art.
Good.
And one would be music.
All right. And then what is that little piece that overlaps the old building? Uh, kind of a triangle shape right up the middle. What is this one? Yeah, what is that?
That is, I believe it's, yeah, I believe it's utility.
To let new construction, I mean, it's.
It's, oh, it's a kiln. It's a kiln for the art room.
Oh.
And some storage. A kiln space for the art room and some storage.
And that will be part of this later, but not much later?
Um, correct, yeah.
Right. That's part of the existing building already. So they're just gonna, uh, block off the end for you have the angle.
Mm-hmm.
So those other two purple rooms that you have right there, they're already there. All right. So I didn't ask you where that, so those, there's an art room and then another classroom toward the cafeteria. Um, and where they're gonna do the kiln area with like an old office area, um, and health room that exists already.
So they'll leave those, uh, that's not new construction.
Well, the, the.
Free art area.
Yeah, the dark black lines would, would indicate new exterior walls.
Gotcha. All right, yeah.
So a question, I'm just curious, not an architect by any means, but just wondering why, um, looks like that, that angled wing, again, now they zoomed all the way in, I'll zoom all the way out. Um, it looks like that angled, uh, piece. The design shows for a second floor, but you have a stopping kind of, uh, you know, two-thirds of the way down. Um, just, just wondering, you know, why we didn't choose to do second floor all the way down?
We didn't need it.
Okay.
Yeah, um, in a, in a a four-section building, you have five grades, you need twenty-four classrooms plus, you know, a couple. Um, and so we just didn't need the extra space. So that was the,
Okay.
The biggest reason. Yeah, just the way it flows.
Yep. Thank you. Just curious, just,
Yeah.
second floor, as long as you're putting it in part of it.
Oh, I know.
If we didn't need the space, that, that makes sense. I just.
Yeah, and we also were, were very mindful, if you have a four-section building, you want your four sections of fourth grade next to each other. You want your four sections of fifth grade right next to each other. So initially, they only had, they had six classrooms up here. And we said, oh, that, that we need, we need eight sections up there because we're gonna have two grades upstairs. Um, you know, so just thinking like that got us to this, you know, got us to this flow through.
Sure.
This, um, this light blue area is, um, kind of a multi-purpose space. Um, you know, where, uh, students could come in, it would be more of a flexi- flexible learning space. Um, you know, kind of in that, um, mode of a media center or literacy center. But with the majority of libraries being classroom libraries, you know, we still wanna have that space for some mixed use. But that would be, that would be kind of a neat feature, uh, as, as students enter into the building. Because this, you know, this will be the, the main entrance. Let me get, let me jump here. This will show you a little bit better. So as students, you know, this will be the main entrance here. This is the, the office area. Um, and then this is the, the primary academic wing for our first through fifth grade classrooms. Remember kindergarten will be over here, uh, to the east of the cafeteria. So this will be kind of just a, a neat commons space, uh, in the center of that, in the center of that academic wing. To be able to use, you know, to be able to be used for, for adding purposes throughout the, throughout the school year and throughout the day.
Can't tell if that opened or is it, is it a door?
So it is, uh, there's a door here. Um, and we'll get better. Sure, we will definitely get better, um, drawings as we, uh, as we get closer. But yeah, kind of an entry point here, uh, an open, uh, an open space. You've got some special ed classrooms here. A sensory room is off this, uh, is off this space as well.
I was just looking at the light blue. I didn't know if it's like a congregating area or if that's an actual area for learning.
Yeah, it'll be a learning space. Yeah, yeah. With just some neat views, um, you know, that'll be a, a new space to bring students. Because their, their views will be to the south and southwest. With some good lines, lighting overlooking that water and that, uh, wetlands area.
It's a big sunspot.
Just the hours. Yeah. And this has only taken like twenty minutes.
And I don't wanna get too deep into it, but do, do, so we have triangle and who else is?
Uh, G M B.
G M B.
Yeah.
They, um, do you would say this is what we're proposing and then you work with the staff and say, let's, or do you go to them and say, this is how we wanna look at this?
They came to us with a couple of different options, like we, they, they initially had, um, they came and met with the team, um, boy, back in August. Well, we've been meeting since last, last spring, but, uh, we had a, a nice group of teachers, um, uh, teacher leaders, principals were here, um, in August and just kind of laid out some things that were gonna be important to us to consider. And then they took that and they had a couple of different variations of this type of concept, like one of the concepts had the academic wing, um, running more north, south and, and actually flipping. So the playground was where the, the proposed academic wing is. And then we had the academic, uh, wing up to where the playground was. And that is, you know, Vic made a great point in terms of when you just look at the natural terrain of the, of the flow of the land. You know, his point was it makes a whole lot more sense putting the academic wing on this side and putting the playground over there. So it's really just different eyes, different, different ways of thinking to help us get to our ultimate solution. It's, it's fascinating.
I, I imagine.
Or maddening, whichever, whichever. Yeah. So other wonders?
I just thought it was interesting. I mean, the playground area, just looking at this image seems very large in comparison to the building, is that that will be the square foot, I mean, comparatively square footage?
So, um, it's not an exact feature, it's just drawn in. That, that's the space that it could be.
Yeah.
And remember, um, we'll have, you know, we'll have a separate playground for kindergarten. You know, you'll have a, a, a lower L kindergarten, you'll have a middle L kindergarten, you'll likely have an upper L kindergarten. So it really is, it will spread out, uh, with some different features, uh, intended for, you know, developmentally appropriate use, uh, by the different grade levels as we move forward. And some of the space could just be green space, you know, for kids to play soccer or kids to play, you know, Gaga ball or whatever they, you know, they wanna do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, your call as well.
I'm good. Good. Now, we, we'll get another rendition, I, I'm taking it, okay.
Correct, yeah.
All right. Preliminary, yes, answer my question.
Yeah, now, as we get closer, now they'll start to ramp up their architectural drawings and that type of thing for us.
All right, that brings us to the portion of our meeting of public comment, and do we have any takers for public comment tonight to address the board? Anybody's, Mr. Smith, you have any?
I would not get any public takers.
Going once, going twice. One move on. All the comments are now closed. For action items today evening, our first action item is student discipline for student twenty-two, point twenty-three, point oh-one. And I would entertain a motion for that the student be expelled for the remainder of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
So.
Any discussion? Having none. Vice President Shoffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slatter?
Yes.
Treasure Gilmore?
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide?
Yes.
Justice Revard?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Motion carried. The next action item is the eighth grade East Coast trip. And I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, let's go with a voice vote for this one for the time consideration. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, East Coast trip is going forward. Next action item is the potential athletic overnight trips. I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, both voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, athletic trip's going forward. And for communication, um, for the Board of Education, Shannon gave me a little tip, she reminded me, and I knew it, but I just, I'm kind of a culture habit. I can call the votes in different orders and vary it up a little, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try that, one of the voice vote. From now, so I'll, I'll give that a try. So.
What are the hints I got from the, uh, training this weekend?
Yeah, yeah. I, one, okay, I appreciate that, thank you. And Matt, did you wanna?
Sure.
Talk about your
Yeah.
conference times that you voted?
Adventure, I'm going to Traverse City. Uh, I did go for the delegate assembly, and that was very interesting to take part in. Uh, it, I'm hoping you guys have looked through the delegate assembly handbook and looked at revisions. Um, if not, I can send you a link later. Uh, they did a similar voting style of the voice vote. There were probably three hundred plus people there, so it made sense to do that. But, um, there were some, I'll say, well, not really hot topics, but interesting topics. The two big ones were, uh, a change in the MS, M A S B, uh, what was that called? It was about the sportsmanship. So essentially, it was one of their recommendations to change the wording of sportsmanship to fair play. And that was a conversation that took probably forty minutes, uh, very passionate on both sides. And when it did not pass, they did not change the wording to fair play. And it remained as sportsmanship, so they encouraged people to, uh, that are in athletics to be in sportsmanship, or have good sportsmanship, be in sportsmanship, uh, to one. So, and their thinking and logic was that it makes it more, uh, gender-friendly. So, just having that word man in sportsmanship. So, uh, that was one of them that took a while to figure out. There are a lot of, um, amendments to that proposal. And, and then, like I said, it came down to, uh, a no vote in further, um, the word sportsmanship. The other one was, um, about, uh, literacy. Let me see if I can find that. Pretty much everything else was approved. I guess that I'll send this link to you, it, it's interesting. If you guys, hopefully you're all aware that, um, M A S B is an organization that we belong to, and they have recommendations for us to, uh, to encourage us, how to run in the school, I got it wrong, sorry, this spoke there, uh, how to, um, set policy. So it urges us to do certain things here, certain things there, and this is the handbook that, that we have to do that. So, one of them the inclusive literature, uh, section G five point three. I'll just read it for you guys. The Michigan Association of School Boards urges school media centers and building and classroom libraries to include literature that reflects the student population and broader society. This should include identifying and creating access to educational materials that reflect all races, ethnicities, religions, civilities, genders, sexual orientations, gender identities, and gender expressions. And that did pass. So that was a new one that, um, M A S B is recommending be encouraged. But again, they, they did say that all of these are encouragements and not things that we have to follow. So, yeah, but that was one there. And I do have the sportsman one, well, I can just read that, that's section G seven point zero-two, school symbols and sportsmanship, and they wanted to change that to fair play. Michigan Association of School Boards urges schools to adopt school names, logos, symbols, and mascots that convey positive images and that are sensitive to the diversity of all people as well as their history and culture. The M A S B also urges its member boards to emphasize positive attitudes and behavior at all school functions by insisting on civility, goodwill, and they would insert fair play, uh, as opposed to good sportsmanship among students, faculty, and community. And again, fair play did not make the cut, so it remains sportsmanship in the title and good sportsmanship in the bottom of the word. Uh, they do also have expla- uh, explanations from their committees. And it's quite interesting to read those. And they also spoke, so it was interesting to hear some of their logic and thinking. So, there you go. Any questions on that? It was, it was longer than I had anticipated, um, good dialogue. Everybody remained somewhat civil, which was pretty good for that many different school districts and different opinions. So that was something fun that I took with me.
Thank you for attending.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Shannon, you're gonna share another time?
I'm sharing, yeah, I've got this, all this stuff to go through and organize my thoughts, so.
Very good, thank you for attending, awesome. All right, we have a good communicating.
Good communicated a lot.
All right, okay. You're fine. We're good. So planning, um, going forward, our next, uh, items before us are vote November eighth. And our next meeting falls after that, which will be November fourteenth, and it'll be a six forty-five business meeting. And without having no more people before the board, it's eight forty-two, it's being adjourned.